Board, who is out ill, God we pray that you bless his back and that he recover and be strengthened. We know, God, that you said in your word that if there's one, if there's some sick amongst us called the elders of the church, that they may pray for them and that they may be healed. And so, God, we're praying that blessing prayer tonight, that you bless him in a special way. We thank you, God, again, for all that you're gonna do for us tonight. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, just wanna put out, ask if there's any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We need to pull the deed of easement for construction and installation of sidewalks along Brack Street, Nash Street from the agenda. The city called today and asked that it be pulled. There's some issues with state and federal dollars involved, and they have to do an assessment of the value of the easements before the before the deed can be given to them. So, they kinda got ahead of themselves, so we need to pull that from the agenda.
Okay, we'll pull item D from the agenda. Any other items concerning the agenda? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Moved to approve the amended agenda.
It's been moved to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor signify by say a aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Under old business, lease agreement and the interlocal agreement for the buggy factory, Mr. Mr. Crump.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chairman. Apologize for calling you Mr. Chairman before. I was just, just habit forming there. But do also wish that the chairman gets well quickly. He was in a lot of pain Saturday, so. Hopefully he'll, he'll heal quickly. Per the board's instructions, on Wednesday, August sixth, progressive contractors and representatives of the city of Sanford, Lee County, and the Partnership for Prosperity in Lee County met. And we hammered out a lot of the issues that had been raised by the commissioners at the August fourth meeting. Namely, you know, making sure that everybody was a party to the lease and some other details. You know, what happens if some, if one person were to pull out of the lease, that kinda thing. And we've been able to address that in the lease and in the interlocal agreement with the city. The three renters agreed that we would all meet this week. We're meeting tonight. The city of Sanford meets tomorrow night, and the partnership meets on Wednesday morning to approve the lease. Today, there were some changes, mainly technical, made between the attorneys to the lease, so a new copy is before you. Also, one other change that was made at the meeting on August sixth was a recommendation to add some additional square footage on the basement or ground floor, whatever, you know, your perspective is. I guess that is the ground floor that's out the back. We realized going through the schematics of the floors that we were probably already gonna be short space. Progressive offered to rent us part of the ground floor at a reduced rate, over four dollars a square foot reduction. And so, we're recommending that attachment A on page eleven, the one that adds eleven hundred and seventy-three square foot, or twelve hundred and fourteen square feet at eight dollars and fifty cents per square foot, be the one that be accepted. That raises Lee County's monthly rent from six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to seven thousand three hundred and eight dollars. I will be happy to answer any other questions you might have. We have representatives of the partnership here tonight, and Joni Martin is representing progressive. So, if there are any questions, we happen to answer them, or you can just ask Attorney Schmidt to go through and go over some of the changes that were made today.
Yeah, that, for me, that would be helpful, you know, rather than trying to read this real quick and see where the changes are.
Okay, the first change would be to your very first paragraph in the lease, which we just added the the titles of each individual tenant. So, for instance, the county of Lee is a body corporate and politic in one of the hundred counties of the state of North Carolina. The next change would be in paragraph ten. On the fourth line down about halfway through, it says tenants shall, we changed it to read tenants shall have the right of first refusal prior to landlord renting any additional space in the premises, which notice shall set forth a reasonable time in which to exercise that right. So, if they're going to rent any space, we have the right to rent that first. And it would, that notice of the right of first refusal would give a timeline in which the county and the city and the partnership would need to respond.
And that question, an issue came up at the last meeting. We've talked about the third floor and what they were gonna do with the third floor. And it basically is going to be roughed. Yeah, so that will already be done. And so, if anybody were to move up on the third floor, you know, we were to expand or whatever. Really, you're just putting up walls and doing very minimal work that would not interrupt our operations on the second and first floor.
Okay.
Well, I've got one while we're there. Is there a list of any type of business that would be compatible to our boards?
We do not have a list. We left it with the idea that the tenants have the right to approve any, any potential other tenants. We can't unreasonably withhold that approval, but for instance, if it was something that was completely incompatible and it would be reasonable to withhold that approval, we can do so.
On the exterior, on the exterior part of the building, were there, even if the the third floor is not completed, will the exterior look beautified or would it be beautified with all the skylights in and all this kinda stuff without anything?
Yes, sir. Point out right now that, you know, the bottom, the building is a historic property, so they do have to, you know, for the tax credit purposes, they do have to have it at some level of standard, so. Yes, sir. Once they start, it's gonna be hard for them to finish.
Yes, in paragraph eleven, we added that the tenants will be responsible for janitorial service in addition to garbage removal services and the fees for proportionate share of our space. Paragraph fifteen, destruction, on the fourth line, if the damage is caused by fire and it remises, and it renders the premises untenable, meaning we can't be in there at all, we have the right to terminate the lease. Paragraph sixteen, if the eminent domain proceedings result in a taking, so the proceedings has been initiated and a court order has, has been handed down resulting in an actual taking, then we will have ninety days to vacate, and the lease will terminate.
I was gonna go back to fifteen just for clarity. If it's far, the only cause?
No. If the premises are damaged by the elements, unavoidable accident, or other casualty, or fire.
I see it now.
Okay. Paragraph eighteen, in the first line, we removed at tenants' sole cost and expense. The landlord and the tenant should all be required to comply with the law. And that is all that changed today.
Any further discussion or questions?
I have one quick one before my end. We didn't bring this up last time, and I don't think it represents a change. But in paragraph one, the second sub-paragraph there, it talks about it is anticipated that the date will be honored before October first, twenty fifteen. Why did we delay to October first, twenty fifteen? I thought originally the plan was to occupy owner about twenty, or the first of July.
We, once the lease is signed, we needed to give the landlord time to secure financing. So, if you see in the prior paragraph, there was ninety days to secure the financing and close, and then had ten months from that point forward to deliver the building. So, that made it October first. So, the intent was to be July first, but with, you know, we've almost delayed them sixty days, you know, from trying to get all the parties to agree to it, so.
Okay, so basically, this doesn't mean that it has to be after October first. That means that we have to give until October the first.
We're giving. Yes, sir.
My question spoke to part twenty-five on the improvements. And I think Ms. Martin can't move for me. It, I feel better that the third floor is gonna be roughed in. You know, so that sits, sits better with me. But it says landlords show make a good faith effort to ensure that all renovations are energy efficient, including using an energy efficient design in all systems, including but not limited to lighting, heating, cooling, plumbing, and electrical systems. And since we're on the first two floors, what processes are gonna be done, you know, to ensure that that third floor is blocked off so we don't lose, you know, heat or anything on the first two floors?
It will be complete, I mean, the, the third floor will be completely renovated. We're gonna do the whole building. So, the heating and cooling, electrical, mechanical, all that will already be up there. And it will be closed off, so you could walk down the hall and think that we had tenants up there. And when you open a door, you're just gonna see a room that might need walls if a future tenant comes in and wants to have that in. But it will be finished out.
So, will you heat, will, will you heat and cool the third floor as well? Or will it just be sort of like, in our house, we have two separate systems, you know?
Right, right. I'm, I'm sure we will moderately, you know, we probably won't heat it to, you know, seventy-two, seventy-three, but we will run the system so that it.
But you'll have the HVAC.
It will all be there, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
John, back to the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I was just gonna say that the specifications that be attached are seventy-six pages, so. Somebody else excuse me. I didn't hand those out. I just thought that was a little excessive.
These schematics.
Yes, sir.
That, and I know that we, we originally had a floor plan which was pretty spread out over three floors. And I know that they did, made an attempt, reasonable, a reasonable attempt to try to consolidate and skinny down the space requirements for the various departments. When we reduced it down to the two floors and now the ground floor, is this the best effort that we've got to accommodate with a, with a minimal footprint with all the staff and the comfort space that's required? I mean, is this, is this, in your mind, this is the best we can do?
Yes, sir. And I believe, you know, Don has been involved in it as well, and, you know, for his staff and the environmental health staff. We've gone over it with them. It's adequate space for our folks. And I know that Marshall Downey with the, the city is happy with their space. I think, I, I think there was some issues with maybe the partnership wanting more meeting space, but I think we all realized that that was probably not attainable at this time. You know, having a big, you know, renting space in this, in that building when we have other spaces all over the city that we already own and the city already owns. So, we feel like this is, from an operational standpoint, the best footprint for us. And you can see that, you know, what you have on the floor plans, proposal one is what I've, you know, I've recommended tonight. And then proposal two was just, you know, the option from the other, you know, that was, was presented two weeks ago, the smaller footprint.
Would you, counsel, would you look at page, my identity is eight, I think it's the interlocal agreement? And look at number six, insurance. Is, is that the equivalent of renters' insurance?
Yes, we would be insuring the contents.
Right. And, and that last, yeah, the last sentence there, both city and county, would you explain that one for me?
We have to give progressive a certificate of insurance. We would name progressive as an additional insured. And also, we would provide a ten-day written notice to progressive in the event there's any material change in our coverage.
Just provide protection for landlord?
Correct.
And in the lease, we have it going both ways as well?
Yes.
So, they'll, they'll name us as insured on their property, property insurance.
Keeps the insurance companies from fighting.
John, what's, do you know the value of that building? What's the value of that building? Tax value?
No, sir. I do not. Joni, I'm sorry. I do not.
Progressive doesn't know?
This is Martin.
Not right off the top of my head, I don't.
Yeah, Don's here.
Yeah, we've got the right guy here. If you need my iPad, Don, it's right here.
We'll know that shortly.
No, they've asked, they've estimated, you know, the improvements in the, in the three million dollar range. So, that will increase the value of the building greatly for tax purposes.
Well, I always had a, a, a problem with the ten-year lease, obviously, 'cause I discussed last time that I think there's gonna be a lot of changes within Lee County, and that may change the whole perspective, not only of that area, the dynamic of that whole area, maybe for the better or for the worse. So, that's, that's where I have a big issue is with the ten-year lease. It may leave us holding for being somewhere we may not wanna be depending on the changes that happen. The, the other, another issue, on the, the back end of the lease, attachment A, which says for years, four and ten, the tenants shall pay rent above there plus the, what's your, what, is there a max percentage that that can go up with? Most leases will say after, you know, three years, we're gonna go up four percent, we're gonna go up two percent. We're gonna go up, just kinda leave it.
We're using the consumer price index for urban wage earners, southern region, and there is no cap. So, whatever that, whatever that CPI index is, and typically with that, the southern region has been the lowest of all the CPIs.
I mean, to me, that's an issue. You're gonna be doing budgets. We're gonna, we don't know where that's gonna head either.
So, counselor, if I might, if I might, because the, let me play a couple of hypotheticals for you. Let's say that, that a year from now, the economy takes a disastrous turn for the worse. And, you know, we're in financial dire straits, and the partnership for some unfortunate reason dissolves. And we find ourselves in a situation where we just can't afford to, to continue to invest in, as much as we would like, we can't afford to invest in, in economic development. And we, and, and the clauses kick in that we just can't afford to staff and, and resource the economic or the, the partnership for prosperity. And I, and I don't think anybody at this table thinks that that'll happen, but, but in the unfortunate case that, that does. What are our obligations under this lease?
Well, in that situation, you would turn to your default paragraph. If the tenants fail to pay rent, that would be termination, and that would be the sole remedy.
So, termination of the lease?
Correct. Now.
And what, and what is progressive's remedy at that point?
Termination of the lease. We would have to vacate.
We vacate the premises.
We also have a non-appropriations provision. So, if in that event, the county decides it can't, or it's not going to appropriate funds, that is not a breach of this agreement. It's simply a non-appropriation. So, we would continue paying out that fiscal year, and then we would be done.
It's the same thing as if the state doesn't provide us funding for certain essential services that we have, then, then obviously that we can't afford to, to pass down funding for other services as well. Okay, so, and then, and let's say that, that if we did, if we did another hypothetical situation, if we did decide that we wanted to maintain funding for the partnership, but we didn't have sufficient funding to fund at the same, at the same level, but we did wanna maintain the partnership, or let's say one of the other partners, let's say the city of Sanford decided they just couldn't afford to do it, but we wanted to maintain it, and they backed out, but we wanted to maintain the partnership, but the, the private sector couldn't step up to replace them. Our options are, we either have to step up and pay the city of Sanford's share, or then they default.
We are one tenant, so if, if one doesn't pay rent, we all don't pay rent. We all do.
Either that, or either that, or we may be able to renegotiate with progressive.
Correct.
Or somebody else may fill that, that void.
Correct.
Okay, so that would be something we might go back and renegotiate with progressive at that point.
Mutual agreement of parties can, can solve a lot of the problems.
So, this would be dealt with like any other business venture?
Correct.
Okay.
It's up into every board, every year.
Right. Now, the reason I ask these things is because these kinds of things can happen. You just can't foresee the future. And I don't, and I know there's nervousness on the part of entering into anything that's more than a one or two or three-year period because we're obligating future boards, in theory, to an agreement that several of us in here won't be around to see through to fruition.
And for a multi-year agreement such as this, it is required that you have a non-appropriations clause in it. And we did specify that the, if there is a non-appropriation, it is not a breach of this agreement. So, they would not be able to sue us for breach. It would simply be a non-appropriation.
And I think there's some, yeah, there's some risk that they're taking, you know, and I think the risk we're taking is we're going out to ten years. So, you know, and there's some give and take on sharing of risk between us and, and progressive.
But we need to remember though, that in, in having a ten-year lease, the very fair ways out for all parties involved are saving money. You know, because if we had a shorter lease.
That's correct.
So, let me, let me, let me also posit this, this notion as well. In the, and maybe you can answer, let's, let's do it in the form of a question. In the event that we get five years or six years into this, we always can, can, and I'm, and I'm asking this as a question. We can always go back to progressive and suggest it's to our advantage to purchase the building. And we can buy our way out of the lease as well. I mean, that's always an option, is it not?
That would just be an agreed-upon separate transaction from this lease.
So, we can always, I mean, even though it's not in the lease agreement that we have a, a lease purchase, we can always approach them, and there's nothing that would forego that. There's nothing in here that says we can't buy the, buy the building. We could always, that's a separate negotiated.
The city wanted that as a provision in the lease, but.
But that's always an option.
You, we run into a couple of problems with, with that. Number one, you know, that, that created some financing issues on progressive part. The tax credits would not apply. So, you know, it had to be a straight lease, so the tax credits, and without the tax credits, you know, this deal as it is doesn't work.
Well, you don't want anything that encumbers either party and disadvantages you in any way financially. So, really, you don't want those kinds of entanglements in the, in the lease agreement. What you just wanna recognize, and the public needs to recognize, that's always an option to, to the parties. Any, either party can approach the other and say, you know, we are interested in purchasing or selling. And that's always an option on the table because you haven't ruled that out in the lease agreement. So, I get, so I guess the other thing that I would suggest here, and this is the part that I like about this, and, and I know there are some of my conservative friends that don't like this, but, and I'm an ultra-conservative guy, but I really do like this. So, I, I just wanna put this on the table for those that are, that don't. Government organizations are notorious for getting into the real estate business and then messing it up. And, and that's not an indictment on people. That's just an indictment on bureaucracy. And, and anybody that thinks that government makes good landlords are crazy. We just don't. Government organizations, because of turbulence or because of, of just, you know, lack of, of abilities. It's, I mean, name me one good government organization that makes a good landlord. Not even Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac make good landlords, okay? So, I just tell you, I don't like government organizations being in the landlord business. And that's why government organizations are always better off, or almost always better off leasing, if they can get favorable lease terms. They, they just don't, they just do. That's not to say you can't get good purchase options, but typically lease options, if you can get favorable terms, are preferable. And especially when you wanna limit your risks long-term. And that's why I like these lease agreements, especially when you can do it where you can get a win-win solution with a contractor who is a professional at doing these kinds of things. And that's why I like these kinds of agreements, 'cause I think they make sense from a business perspective with companies that know how to manage leases and with government organizations which change over time. That's why I like lease agreements like this. And even though we may be paying a slight premium over the short term, over the long term, these may be very lucrative for us. And if we don't find them to be lucrative, or if the situation changes over time economically for us, we have an out. So, that's why I like this, why I support.
That's a ten-year out. Now, you're, you're, you're doing, you're doing, you're doing, you're doing, you can't get out any time.
You can't if you broke.
On an annual basis.
You don't bring the money.
Any years, do we talk about the code of ethics on that, getting out of the lease?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think, well, you raise a good point. I think we're entering, we're entering into this in good faith. And our, our intentions is to honor the ten years. But like Commissioner Womack stated, you, you don't know what's gonna happen five or six years down the road. Things could, things could change quite a bit, and, and we may have trouble honoring that lease. So, that, you know, we would have to, we would have to address it at that time.
Mr. Chairman, if I might make one more, one more postscript to this whole thing. For the last six or eight months, we have looked exhaustively at what our other options are in the county. And I personally went out and tried to find and encourage other landlords that had vacant space to nominate other parcels around the county on North Hornet Boulevard, down on Steel Street, and other places that would be competitive with the buggy factory. Not that I didn't like the buggy factory. I thought it was a wonderful option. But I wanted to try to get competition into this, this, this scheme. And I gotta tell you, we could, we just couldn't find anyone that could, that could, that could nominate suitable space and put a competitive bid on the table that gave us multiple options. We just couldn't find it. It just wasn't out there. We tried. I know the county manager tried. You know, I made multiple phone calls soliciting and encouraging people to do this, and there's, folks just weren't willing to put skin in the game.
Well, you actually put it on the table in December twenty thirteen, and then we extended another.
And we did, we did. So, I mean, we really have tried to get competitive options on the table for this thing. And, and as it turns out, progressive has, has ponied up. They, they've worked with us. They, they've put other, multiple options on the table in front of us. They've negotiated in good faith. And, you know, if folks don't think that this is a fair price, you know, they didn't, they didn't put a counter offer.
Any other discussion?
I wanna say something. I wanna say that, one, I don't agree. Sanford Hogg, I thought he did a great job as a landlord, and I'm very proud.
Quasi-governor.
Whatever you wanna call it. They did a great job. Secondly, I wanna say that I appreciate the, 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 the time that counsel has put into this in ensuring that we had a way to at least opt out if we had to. And, and that's very good for all of us, because I don't know what the city board might do or what we might do. And the partnership might get lucky and raise all the money they want to raise and, and buy it all. I don't know. But I'm glad the provisions are in there for us. And having said that, I will move that we approve the resolution for the lease and the local agreement for the buggy factory.
Motion's been made for the approval of the lease for the buggy factory. Counsel wanted.
I have one, one change. Possession, paragraph twelve, it should say October first, not October thirty-first.
It's October, I'll check first.
Should say October first.
A motion's been made. Is there any further discussion? Seeing there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the lease agreement for the community economic development joint use facility buggy factory lease, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Great job, yes, yeah, great job.
Under new business, ESRI small government department platform contract for GIS, Mr. Kavosik.
Yes, first off, I apologize, the budget impacted is eighty-nine hundred dollars. I do so many of these, I left it out.
Yes, okay.
We currently pay eleven thousand one hundred dollars a year in maintenance for five basic ArcGIS licenses, four advanced licenses, one 3D license and one network license. After we presented our budget, our initial budget for fifty online subscriptions so that we could tailor some of these projects that we do, that was for ten thousand dollars, that Ezra came out with the small government department platform, it was a total of twenty thousand dollars. So if we switched from a maintenance standpoint over to a contracted standpoint, we would be paying eleven hundred dollars less than what we were approved for, we would get those fifty online subscriptions plus everything that Ezra has, which we just couldn't afford it before, we never, we brought, if even just the ArcGIS server, just that alone is over twenty thousand dollars and we're getting everything. So, and unlimited licenses for our department, where again, we only have one 3D license and one network license, we're just beginning it all. That's why we're switching it over to a contracted service for the maintenance and that's what we're asking you to approve.
Commissioner Darrell Rumpel's made the motion to approve the procurement of ESRI small government department platform contract. Any discussions?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I wholeheartedly support that motion and I would just like to add that I have had comments made from counterparts within the state and outside of the state that tell me that our GIS section does magic with the tools that they have, that Mr. Kavosik's himself is a highly sought-after talent that, I'm not sure that arming him with even greater tools is a safe thing to do, but that.
Thank you.
But that he is an incredible talent, that we need to give him all the toys that he seeks to keep him happy, since we don't give him all the salary that we'd like to give him, but we do need to keep him, you know, armed with all the toys that he likes and that, and that he does do magnificent work with it. The latest little product that he's got, we do need to see up close and personal one day, is his 3D workup that he's done with GIS layer on, on the shelf layer in Lee County, which is, which is something very unusual.
Well, with this new software getting the whole package, we should be able to put that online for everyone.
Yeah, that would be incredible. It's, it's something that I haven't seen done anywhere else in the country and he's, and he's put a lot, he's put hundreds of man-hours into that, into that work. I would just tell you, some incredible work. Everybody that, he's wowed everybody in the state that's seen the products that have come out of Lee County. He set new standards of excellence for GIS teams all over the state, so, you know, he just, we just get rave reviews for the work that they do here all the time. So we, well, I think we would be remiss if we didn't support his request.
Anyone else? Any further discussion?
You should probably get a copy of this.
It's being recorded.
Probably get a copy and submit it when you do your budget, thanks for your presentation. Thank you so much, Detective Womack.
It's been made, a motion's been made to approve the ESRI small government department platform contract as written. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Thank you, Don. Next item up on the agenda is the proclamation recognizing September as childhood cancer awareness month in Lee County.
I had a couple of things, just corrections, yes, in the.
They can correct.
Uh, the proclamation is recognizing September as childhood cancer awareness month in Lee County, whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among US children between infancy and age fifteen. This tragic disease has detected more than fifteen thousand of our country's young people each and every year and whereas, one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer. Many infants, children and teens while suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers and whereas, founded over twenty years ago by Steven Feierstein, a member of the Max Factor family, the American Cancer Fund for Children Incorporated and Kids Cancer Connection Incorporated are dedicated to helping these children and their families and whereas, the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment in North Carolina's Children's Hospital in Chapel Hill, the Levine Children's Hospital in Charlotte, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas, the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor courageous kid recognition award ceremonies and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim September as childhood cancer awareness month in Lee County and urges all citizens of Lee County to remember those children and their families who have lost their fight with cancer or have been affected by cancer, adopted this eighteenth day of August, twenty-fourteen.
Can we just do a typo?
Yeah, it's been next.
Okay.
Chairman Darrell. Commissioner Darrell Rumpel has recommended approval, is there any other discussion? I just want to say I have three lovely grandchildren, our two sons grew up healthy, wealthy and wise and I just wish that we could make that happen with all our children and pray that it doesn't as far as cancer, et cetera, et cetera. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Again, another unanimous vote. Anything, Mr. Crumpton?
No, sir.
Counsel, do you have anything further for us on the special call meeting? Okay, a motion's been made to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go Redskins.